Okay, this meeting comes to, will come to order. Welcome to a joint general government subcommittee town council meeting. Today is Wednesday, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, and it is six P M. in the veterans' meeting room. Next agenda item is roll call. Counselor Chenier. Counselor Dow. The citizen member Clemens is absent. Citizen member Julian.
Present.
And Chairman Stephen Kelly, myself, is present. So we have a quorum. First, next agenda item is consider and accept general government subcommittee meeting minutes of March twelfth, twenty twenty five. Has everybody had a chance to review those?
You need a.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections? All those in favor?
I wasn't there, I understand.
Alright, motion carries. Next agenda item is review and discuss entering into a facility use agreement with Y M C A of Central Massachusetts for use of the Petro Pool on four Tuesdays from nine A M. to twelve P M. from July eighth, twenty twenty five, through August fifth, twenty twenty five, and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents. Entertain a motion to recommend for approval to town council. A motion by Council Chenier.
Second.
Seconded by citizen member Julian. Any discussion?
Yeah, one, these are just the four events and they do like something special because they run the pool.
Do I have, if I may, Mr. Chen?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. The Y M C A operates the pool for the state. Alright, on four Tuesdays, the recreation summer program.
Okay.
From my pronoun, they go down and they have exclusive use of that pool for those four Tuesdays. This is an annual thing that we have. We have the budget of money and the recreation budget, as well as we're awaiting the results from an added way granted we apply for every year.
Anybody else? Any discussion? Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor? The motion carries unanimously. Citizen member Clemens has just arrived. Agenda item number five, review and discuss extending the appointment of Bill Tremblay as the town's first poet laureate until April of twenty twenty six, as requested by the library director. Entertain a motion to recommend for approval to town council.
So, second.
Any discussion?
If I may. So, as the councilors are aware, Mr. Tremblay, a long time South Bridge, grew up in South Bridge, graduated from South Bridge Schools. The library wanted to honor him as the first poet laureate from South Bridge. She initially had only a one-year appointment for him to sit in the seat as poet laureate. He wrote a book and they're doing some promotions with the book, raised money, they want to do a scholarship program through the fundraising of that. We're looking to put together the scholarship account for them. She just asked that it be extended for another year and would like to have us as the seated poet laureate for South Bridge for another year. I think it's great.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair. To the town manager, is that volunteer job?
Yes, oh yeah, there's no pay. It's an honorary poet laureate. Yeah, there's no pay. It's non-employer. It's just a.
Anybody else? All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item number six, review and discuss authorizing the payment of prior fiscal year bills for Amazon in the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents to be paid from account zero zero one 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 dash five four two zero zero, Town Council Office Supplies. Entertain a motion to recommend for approval to Town Council.
So.
Second.
Motion by Chenier, seconded by Dow.
So these bills go back to twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. We've had continual issues with Amazon relative to the account and I'm always saying that we're behind. We did an extensive review of all pending invoices that may have been out there. These were discovered as the last ones remaining unpaid. We have just recently changed and worked with Amazon to change our account to a business account, which gives us better terms. So fortunately, we won't have any more issues with Amazon, but we believe there's any past due balances that had been kicking around from any accounts. Because there's various different accounts through town that we have the Amazon, so we're trying to set it up into a centralized Amazon account so that we can monitor. Also, we can put some thresholds on how much individuals can order. And if it goes over that threshold, then it has to be approved by us before they can order it, so we can kind of monitor this stuff. It shows unfortunate that they've been kicking around as long as they have, but we have to pay the bills, so.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair. I know it's an old bill, but the question is, when you order through Amazon, isn't it should be like a card on file and pay for it direct before? I don't know how the town set up that account.
I have no idea how it was originally set up, but it's been a struggle for the last year and a half. That's why we've recently worked with Amazon. We had an Amazon rep actually come into the building, work with us to set up this different account so that it can be streamlined the ordering as well as the accounting processes.
And that, do you have, I mean, I don't need you to provide it for me, just asking, do you know what that bill was for at that time or is too old, we can't confirm?
I mean, I have, I attached the invoices to it. You know, it wasn't anything extraordinary. There was clock ribbon, so that could have been for the town manager's office. It could have been for D P W. Everybody has time clock. We have these timestamps, the town clerks. So some office ordered it, you know, banker's boxes and all that. It could have been a number of offices that may have ordered this, but.
So now, so now, may I continue? Thank you. So now it's, you can specific to what department orders?
Through the accounts, yeah.
So it is like.
It's a business account now. How they set it up before, I have no idea, but we have it set up now into a business account.
Thank you. Member Clemens?
So I noticed on the invoices that one was, you know, it was billed through, say, the town, Town of Southbridge, Bill to Cheryl Ryan, for instance, shipped to Gail Reducha. I just thought I said the right name wrong. And then the next invoice, to your point, again, it says Bill to Town of Southbridge, but shipped to Adriana Robins. So, you know, Rubena, excuse me, whatever. So obviously, maybe that's how, because, so for instance, a library order stuff, you know, so shipped to, you know, somebody at the library or shipped to. So now they set up a business, so somewhere along the line, you've had an account of some sorts. Is there, I'm surprised, don't they have a way for municipality to, you know, you've got the main, whoever's paying it, so it's the Town of Southbridge Accounting Office, whatever. But that, you know, who bought it? What department bought it? Why, they don't have a little line for that?
I'm not sure how it works, to be honest with you. All I know is we set it up properly for going forward.
Yeah, and then, and then you say that, okay, so you're going to monitor, I can understand monitoring things, but in the reality of it, if this is a trash can and the other's a ribbon for something, maybe it's, you know, the library making a decoration for something, for instance. Why would, I mean, obviously, if you were spending, they, they have to spend within their budget. If they're buying a supply, it's part of their supply. If they're buying something to place, part of their maintenance or whatever, you know, why would, at any time, unless there was some odd, like, wait, you know, a hundred orders by one thirty, whatever. Why would you need to come to council if it's all within their budgeted maintenance supplies, whatever?
What do you mean to council?
Well, you said it would have to come here.
No, no, not to town council, to my office.
Oh, to your office. Okay, well, you said it would have to come here. That's how you termed it, so I'm like, why?
I term here, me?
Because every time we turn around, something's coming here.
No, 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 no. When I, when I say, when I term here, it would come to.
So if there was some discrepancy, right, if you felt there was a discrepancy or too much of action activity of some sort.
I don't think any employee might do it, but it could. There's a lot of things you can buy on Amazon.
Right.
Somebody could buy a generator and it goes through, we set up the threshold, so nobody can buy a large purchase.
Right, a large purchase, yeah, okay. I'm talking about a number, yeah, okay, a dollar per, per purchase.
No, I'm not, yeah, it's a large threshold.
Right, I would assume that within a, never assume anything, but within a department, people are buying items that are, that would fall somehow in their budget. They know what they're spending.
I'm not, I'm not.
Whether it's Amazon or whether it's the U. Packer or wherever they're buying from, Inc. or something, they know what they have in their budget for things.
Correct.
So, okay, I just wanted to be clear about how the money was being.
Counselor Chenier?
No, I've talked to you about this before, but isn't it time for us to, this town to get a P. Card? So to pay these bills like Amazon and those kinds of things?
We wouldn't use it for that. Not for that. We have an account set up. It's the right way to set it up. It was just, it's now set up right. I mean, Amazon's a great vendor. There were a lot of other issues. I mean, we had now have it set up under the state contract business account. Where before it was not, where technically, in the aggregate year over ten thousand, you're supposed to do bidding. So now it's set up under a state contract with the right business accounts to the right accountability.
What's the threshold?
I, off the top of my head, I can't remember.
We're not talking thousands of dollars, are we? Okay.
But we do have it set up now. We can go in, one individual can go in and look at every department and determine who ordered it, when they ordered it, how much they ordered.
Don't you have a, it's like this bill here, isn't it, shouldn't it have showed that there's a outstanding invoice that wasn't paid?
They kept saying we had an unpaid balance and nobody could track it down. We had to really do a deep dive to find out exactly where we were at.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, then all those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Item number seven, review and discuss that the Town of Southbridge accept General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section Clause, Section twenty-two I, which authorizes an annual increase in the amount of the exemption granted under General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause twenty-two, Clause twenty-two A, Clause twenty-two B, Clause twenty-two C, Clause twenty-two E, and Clause twenty-two F, by the percentage increase in the U. S. Department of Labor Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index for the previous year as determined by the Commissioner of Reverend, to be effective for applicable exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July first, twenty twenty-six. Entertain a motion to recommend for approval to Town Council. Motion by Chenier, seconded by Julian. Any discussion?
Was there a summary of this? Because I went through like thirty pages and said, this is kind of, you know.
Did you get those letter memo?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, on my computer, I was going and going, how women, how many? It was, it was so much.
I summarized the memo, what the clauses were, and then attached the General Law.
But that memo wasn't much to understand, like the memo even wasn't, it was about a lot of Ss and a lot of sections and a lot of things, but you had to, if you tried to read them, which, I mean, I read quite a bit and I went, no, this is stupid. This is like eighty pages of, you know, I mean, I get there's an important factor, but.
This came through for the Veterans Council. I'll let Mr. Adams explain it. You know, we've had a lot of conversations with Dave within the office about the implementation of this. The original motion that was forwarded to us was all encompassed into one motion. This has been broken into two. And I did it, I did include the D L S bulletin, which included the languages that should be used for the adoption of it. So it's two different sections. One, one would be some of these things we already provide. I believe the first one would just be a COLA increase, so the town could just, could do two things, just do a COLA increase or adopt the second section, which is local option, both are local options, and increase the amounts that are provided, and I'll turn it over. Did I do, did I explain that?
No.
As explained.
Just one other question to go along with, then you can might be able to answer it too. I noticed that also, you know, the accountability to it seemed daunting in some ways, like it had, you had to send in your paper at the end of the, and so there was a whole lot of rules and regulations and I thought, who's ever even gonna?
No, that's a good question.
It was just, you had to get it all by the commissioner or something, whatever, yeah, I can't remember now, but, yeah.
So.
Go ahead. This looks nice. I like this paper with the actual.
Well, so, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. If you don't mind, if I can go through this one and the other one. And Town Manager is correct, all towns had to split these two, our clauses up. It is a requirement, and the verbiage in here, all towns to accept this had the same verbiage in it. Because we have other clauses that we've already accepted in town, the memo was the purpose of saying, hey, we do accept these clauses already, but under the Heroes Act, they came up with an I and a J. So one is based on COLA and the other one is based on local option, two hundred percent. So, that being said, you already have local options. In the town, you can go fifty, sixty, seventy percent. Didn't even have to have the Heroes Act even pass to do that. Town of Oxford had fifty percent local option, now it's at a hundred. Auburn already had a hundred, but they accepted I. It, it's very confusing, but in this case, the, the good question here was, it's daunting. The, all the assessors that I talked to gave the numbers the next day, because they keep track of all those numbers. Every time, somebody that's ten or ninety percent disabled through the V. A. system, or a hundred percent through the V. A. system. So I can go to Francine tomorrow and say, what's our numbers look like? And she'll give you the numbers right off the bat because she has to keep track of them. And by law, you actually have to get a V. A. letter every June that says, alright, Dave, you're at ninety-nine, you're at ninety percent, because you only goes by tens. And then I have to take that paper in to go to the assessor to get the, to receive the abatement, because some of those V. A. disability claims can be taken back. So, that being said, and it's, I've seen it happen before, you have cancer, cancer is now in remission, it's gone completely. The V. A. will absolutely take a look at something like that and take that V. A. disability right back from now.
Or do you have a body to work in, whatever?
Right, so that the disability in the civilian world is different than the disability within the V. A. system in the military. It's service-related disabilities. So you have a disability caused by your military service. Doesn't mean you can't work anymore. It doesn't mean that you are very limited, like they say a cop does thirty years, they're limited on how much time they can actually work again. Where in the V. A. setting, it's not. It's because it's military service. Let's just say you lost an arm, or you got T. B. I. It's all based on military service, so you can go back, and if you're capable of working, you can go back to work and collect the V. A. disability at the same time. One's federal, one's town, one's state, whatever it may be, or private. So in this case, let's see which one we are. This is the cost of living side, so based on the Consumer Price Index itself. Now, when we did up the numbers at the very back, I would even almost give it to the last page. What I did was, I took the numbers that the town had, and I went ahead and did, I think it was Dean who may have done two or five percent or the assessors, because it's on an average of whatever D O R comes up with. I added that in there. If it was two percent, five percent, we don't know what it's going to be year to year. Now, and then the J, the section J, that you can accept as well, is automatically doubled. Basically, you can go from, if you have ten to ninety percent, you get four hundred dollars abated on your property taxes. That will automatically double to eight. So from that point on. So, the town is already paying fifty-one thousand, I think it's fifty-one thousand dollars a year, fifty-one thousand three hundred dollars a year for abatements or covering. That would just double it to a hundred and two thousand, six hundred dollars. Then if you add the I, which is the COLA, then you'd add a couple thousand dollars to it, based on the percentage.
Any, any questions? Anybody else? Clemens?
So I just want to make sure I understand this. So, we are, we already offer the exemptions from section, clause, section twenty-two to section twenty-two F. Right, so we're just adding, we would be just adding these new ones. So today, somebody that meets the criteria of, say, Clause twenty-two E would get a one thousand dollar exemption.
They would. That's your baseline.
Yes, today, okay, so and then we, and so, so by section's twenty-two, and I believe you just split the two different agenda items, but.
It is, it was required. Every town was split. When I wrote the motion myself, I put it in one. I was asked for everything, and then made them do the work and split it.
So section, section then. Section twenty-two I is the offering a additional COLA, or an additional exemption for COLA, right?
Yes.
Alright, so, and this COLA amount is based on.
It's based on, yeah, it's based on C. P. I. D. O. R. will come out that annually and say, okay, the inflation was three percent, two and a half percent, whatever it may be. And then that's the number that would go off.
So, so whatever the exemption, whatever the qualifying exemption is in section twenty-two to twenty-two H, then that would be increased by whatever the.
If it's, so what I, I'll go back to that back page. Let's just say it was fifty-one thousand three hundred dollars that the town is already abating already. So if you were to add the two percent to it, you're talking about another two thousand dollars. So it'd be fifty-three thousand three hundred dollars, something like that, without accepting Clause J, which would be doubling it. Not to confuse everybody here, there are already local options that towns, towns use. It's in, it's in the mass general law. As I said, Oxford was at fifty. They went to a hundred this year. I wrote the warrant. It went up to a hundred, up to a hundred. They also, because what they didn't want to do, they had a local option already, what they didn't want to do is say, take this away because it's a town meeting. And the people say, yeah, we're going to vote it down, we're going to get rid of it, and then hope the town will turn around and vote for from fifty to a hundred percent. It becomes very confusing. So they took the safe way out, and I agreed with it. That, just leave it in there, increase it from fifty to a hundred. But that's a regular local option. You didn't need the Heroes Act to do that before. This town, Southbridge itself, is very simple. It never accepted a regular local, an increase in the local option, ever. So, just because it says one hundred percent, let's say we were talking about that thousand dollars. It says up to two thousand then, right? Thousand is baseline, up to another thousand, I should say. And that is numbers based on what the assessors have on your taxes that you had paid into it. Don't ask me that. I have no idea how that works out, because I don't do the math on it, but it can be up to another thousand dollars. So, and then Auburn was, was automatically already at a hundred percent anyways, up to a hundred percent. And then they just accepted the cost of living increase out of it, because they didn't want to take that chance of the townspeople turning it down. Turn, vote it down, and then try to get a voter back up. That makes sense.
Counselor Chenier?
They have to meet a criteria, am I correct? They just automatically don't get it because they're shown they're a hundred percent disabled. They have a criteria they have to meet, and I believe you mentioned it as every year come June, you need to get that letter from the VA or whoever handles that. So, there's no guarantee they're going to get this. And for somebody to get a disability pension from the military, everybody thinks it's easy, but it's not an easy process. Some people take years and years to get the disability that, because of an injury they had or whatever in the war. It's time for us as a community, it's happening all over the country, to back our service people and to help those service people out that get injured, to, to, to help us, you know, to make our life easier here in the world.
Can I, Counselor May, real quick.
Yes, Mr. Adams, go ahead.
Just to understand too, this is also not about just the veteran.
Correct.
This is surviving spouses. This is adult or younger children, all these spouses. They have to be obviously dependent children, period. So this goes to them as well, just like when we talk about the elderly clauses that the town has accepted. Not everybody qualifies. There are requirements, but, you know, most towns actually accepted this. They just did a local option, increased, because they increased the veterans, they increased the senior citizens too at the same time at the town meetings. So in our case, we're not, we never accepted those other local options before. Hopefully that makes.
Miss Clemens?
Thank you. When you mentioned the spouses, so you're talking about specifically the exemption for people who died, who, spouses who died and then the remaining living spouse or children.
Right, then we call.
So then they're, right, I just wanted, because I don't know if the people who are listening understand, you know, that we're going, that there are a whole lot of eligibility, you know, permanent loss of foot or hand or permanent loss of, there's different types of, of what we're talking about here. So when you just happened to say, I'm saying, how is the spouse getting the money? But it made sense if they're, one of them had said if they passed, if they were killed in action. So then the spouse gets the exemption on the taxes.
Have to be service-related deaths.
Service-related.
They have to be certain, just because a veteran dies doesn't mean they're service-related dead. So some would automatically fall off. Here's the whole star spouses process too, and, I mean, it gets into the weeds, and I know Keith and I have talked extensively because V. S. O. is about, it was very confusing because the state just threw it out there and said, they had to do a road show, because we were, we were dumbfounded by one of these certain needs requirements from the R. M. B. to the excise taxes to, to even this. And, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just, okay, I just want to make, so everything about these exemptions has to do with property taxes.
Correct.
Okay, because only one mentions, you know, the full exemption for real estate, mentions real estate, not all say real estate in these little clauses. So that's, I'm just making sure we're not talking about something else in this whole thing. So I'm still confused though about the up to. So you're saying they are already getting a percentage now?
Yeah, baseline percentage.
Baseline percentage. So determining who, so you say, okay, we accept this or more, I guess up, now it's up to another hundred percent, but who's making that decision? I don't understand who makes that, each person comes in with their paper, but who makes the decision?
That's a good question.
It's if it's, if it's not outright fifty percent more, a hundred percent more, whose discretionary decision is that? How do you get in trouble?
If the town council accepts this.
Yes.
Right, so they accept it, they go forward. Now the assessor, assessors have to do their homework on it. So what they do is they say, okay, we have twenty people that's ten to, ten to ninety percent. They're the ones who screen it, write the abatement itself that goes to the treasurer's office. So there's oversight. It can't be just anybody walking in there. So I hope I'm able to answer.
No, no, but, but you're still, it's another hundred percent. So they were already getting a thousand dollars off or something. Now they can have another up to a thousand.
Two thousand.
So Joe gets eight hundred off and, and Jack gets five hundred off and Betty gets a thousand. How do you figure that out? Who makes that decision?
The V. A.
The V. A. makes that decision.
The letter that they have to provide to the veteran or the surviving spouse every year has to be turned into the assessor's office in order to qualify for one of those money abatements.
Right.
So if it's fifty percent, then it's fifty percent. So that's, that's what we are going to decide here, or you guys are going to decide here, how much you're going to accept, whether it's going to be doubling.
Are we going to go to a hundred or are we going to go seventy-five?
Oh, well, that's what you said, you kept saying up to. We're just on, it's a, alright, you're deciding on up to. So if you say it's a hundred, everybody gets a hundred percent.
So, go back to the, what it is right now.
Yeah, no, maybe it's good questions. No, no, I understand what you're saying, because it's so, the percentages are so weird in how we, we take a look at these.
We're talking two different percentages. Let's just stick with the veteran disability percent. Hundred percent V. A. disabled, thousand dollars right now, the base. If you accept it, up to the hundred percent, then it's two thousand dollars. And what decides that will be the letter that proves that that person is a hundred percent, or eighty, or fifty, or sixty, or whatever.
Oh, the letter says what percentage of disability they are.
Oh, yeah, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, you're right. The letter that comes from the V. A. says what percentage they are, and that's how.
So on that letter, it gets, every June, you get a letter. And the V. A. says he, and it says you're at a hundred percent, and some will say, that's one of the verbiage they put on there, they, they basically saying you can't work or you can work. The V. A. makes that decision on it, right? Yeah, so.
Because I got that there was a letter that said they were disabled, but they're saying what percentage of disabled, and that's how the assessor will decide. And will not decide, but they will then apply to eighty percent.
Because of whatever law that you pass, whatever town council passes, right. So, but it only goes by tens. So it doesn't, we don't use a zero. We do ten, twenty, all the way up to one hundred.
But they're already getting their thousand, or they're already getting something.
They're already getting, and it's monitored and overseen by the assessor's office.
If they're a hundred percent.
Well, even if they're a ten percent. Okay, excuse me, please, get recognized by the chair, the fool speaking out.
I apologize.
Counselor Chenier?
Question. Can they go beyond a hundred percent?
Not, not with this.
No, no, not with this.
You mean on a V. A. dis, well, everybody's got like a thousand percentage points, but the V. A. has its own math.
Okay.
So you can end up having fifty percent, which they take the high, and they say you get fifty, twenty, and the other twenty percent, depending on what you're disabled for. They take the highest number, fifty, and they start doing the V. A.'s math at that point in time. So you may have ninety points, but you only get sixty percent disability.
Okay, that's.
That's how it works.
Alright.
It, oh, yeah, it's a lot.
Any, any other questions? Okay, just for the, just for the record, I want, I just think it's.
Okay, just for the, just for the record, I want, I just think it'd be, clarify what we're dealing with here. The stat, the state statute has several categories of real estate exemptions. There are different amounts based on service-connected disabilities. The minimum amount is $400, a real estate tax exemption, which would be for, say, a veteran that had a 10% or more service-connected disability, that's the bottom, the bottom exemption currently. There are other categories that would get to 400, it'd be Purple Heart recipients and certain parents of military service members who died in service, Gold Star parents. It also lists veterans who were prisoners of war, veterans with, with loss or permanent loss of one foot, hand, or eye, and surviving spouses who have not married. There is another exemption of up to $750 eligibility would be a veteran who had suffered a loss or a permanent loss of abuse or one foot, hand, or eye as a result of military service. I do have a question, is that, does the 700, is the $750 in addition to the $400, or is that?
One or the other.
It's one or the other.
It's either the high.
Okay. And then, you know, and then it goes on, another, another exemption for $1,250, 12, I mean, it's not, $1,250 for, for other criteria, it goes up to $1,500 if you meet a cer, other certain criteria, and then all the way up to 100% real estate exemption, for instance, for surviving spouses of, of military person killed in action. So, and I, you know, I mean, we're talking about, and these are, these are already exemptions that people are allowed to obtain in, in Southbridge anyway. So we're really just talking about the two, the two new sections, section 22I and section 22J.
Yeah.
Section 22I is the COLA. Now, you give a couple of examples here, a 2% COLA or a 5% COLA, I mean, it would be one or the other, it would be depend on what, what the Consumer Price Index.
Correct.
Okay.
Every year.
And, and is there somebody in the federal government that says it, you know, or someone that, somebody that says it's a 2% COLA this year?
Yes.
Okay, who would that be?
We, we get it through the, the state does put it out, we use it also for our water and sewer and budgets. You know, it's the Consumer Price Index year over year during this period of time, and they'll say this is the COLA for that period of time.
Okay. So the 2%, so the two, what you have here, the 2% or 5%, those are just examples?
Just examples, yes.
Okay, okay.
Usually five is the max.
Yeah.
When we give, so usually the five is the max. I know in the contracts that we do with water and sewer, the max is 0 to 5, so it's whatever it is.
I had one assessor, and I think it was 3% or 4% on average.
And then, and then the 22, then the 20, the other section, 22J, basically allows us to double all the exemptions in, in the previous sections, correct?
Mm-hmm.
If, if we, if we want to. Okay, that's.
There is.
Yes, Ms. Clemens?
Thank you. There is something that we haven't really said, and it probably won't make a difference, but we should say it because it's about budget. And so we look to the town manager, and we say, you say currently we're about $51,300.
$51,000, yes.
And if projected, if it were to be 100% and, and move forward, the potential new total could be 102,000, plus COLA could be 107, up to 107,000. So one might say, Mr. Town Manager, does our budget, you know, we're gonna find another $50,000 in monies, what you're feeling on the increase to the budget, the potential increase to the budget?
So, this comes out of the overlay account. So we do have an overlay reserve that we can absorb this, and then next year, we would raise the overlay to accommodate the increase. But we have enough in this, of this budget that we don't have to change the budget, there's enough in the overlay reserve. And we would just raise it on a recap sheet and make it overlay next year.
And that was a question I was gonna ask the town manager, do you have nothing in overlay this year to be able to start July 1st?
Yeah, we do. Yeah, we do. We, we had a conversation in the office of how, how will the impact.
And not to, I mean, sometimes you gotta dig in the weeds and say things that you are uncomfortable to say, so I'll say it, because, you know, I'm not a council, I'm not ready. Does this ever?
22 to 22.
Does this, does, does an increase like this make a community more, and I don't mean to sound, I'm not council, I support the veterans, I agree in this, I'm okay with this, just say, does this make a community more attractive to other, to veterans moving, to move into, when they know that there's the ability to, if, you know, you say not all communities accept this type of thing, and because of the costs involved or the extra to the budget, I mean, just.
So send down the other three towns, and the South, and Keith, and that's a really good, and I'm sure Keith's got it, and he's, yeah, they have numbers of how much VA disability comes into the town every single year, and I'm sure he, we can provide that pretty simple. But, but that being said, you also have chapter 115 here. If you're able to get somebody that's maybe 10, 20% disabled, but puts them over the edge that they no longer have to pay for chapter 115, because they put them over the threshold of, was it 200% poverty level, below the poverty level? That saves the town from having to fork up to chapter 115 to help them out as well. So this does change things up.
Sergeant Anka.
Mr. Jarrett, can I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
So, as Dave said, so, anybody that's gonna qualify for any of these abatments, they're bringing in whatever it is, 10 to 100% VA funds. So that money, they're in our community, they're spending that money in our community. It could be anywhere from $500 all the way up to $4,000. And, and for the, our biggest, I guess, if you would swallow, would be your 100%ers. And for doubling, and that goes to like a $2,000 abatement. They're bringing in four to $5,000 a month, and VA monies outside of whatever else they have, or the social security, wherever it takes to be, they're spending it in our community. So, that answers.
That's just the, you know, it's, it's that kind of money logical thing that you gotta ask.
No, I, this chair through you, just, just that, you know, on top of that, is the fact that this is another feather than the cap of Southbridge, when other towns are already, have been doing this in a sense, a local option, locally, except for Southbridge besides the, the 100%. So this puts us on par with all those other communities that may have a little bit more funds available to, to other, other causes. So, I, I think it just, again, it's one more step up in the right direction. Not that I'm biased.
There's probably no conflict of interest there, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm fine, thank you. I appreciate the answers and this time, and thank you.
Any further discussion? Just to be clear, we're voting on, on this, on this agenda item, we're voting only on clause 22I, which is adoption of the COLA provision. So, all in favor? Okay, unanimous by all members. Motion carries. Agenda item number eight. Review and discuss the town of Southbridge accept general laws, chapter 59, section 5, clause 22J, which authorizes the annual increase in the amount of the exemption granted under general laws, chapter 59, section 5, clause 22, clause 22A, clause 22B, clause 22C, clause 22E, and clause 22F by 100% of the personal exemption amount, subject to the conditions in clause 22J, to be effective for applicable exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1st, 2026. Entertain a motion to recommend for approval to town council.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, motion by Dallas, second by Julia.
Mr. Chair, just a point of clarification, even on the last one, it says on or after July 1st of 2026.
That should be 25.
25, and that, I know the fiscal year will be 26.
Right, it's like, sorry.
No, that's okay, I just wanted to make sure it was clean, yeah.
Yes, that one too. No, we're on this one now.
You want the 26, I'll be on one.
So, oh, there's a, there's an error on, is that an error? Sorry, is there an error on numbers, on the agenda item we just voted?
Yeah, it should've been 25.
All right.
I'll amend it at the council, if that's okay. If you're all agreeing.
I think it's a scrimmages error, so.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion on 22J? I think we already discussed a lot of it. So 22J would, would basically double the exemptions if we adopted it. Any, any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
It's your last inter.
Do you want to pump the meeting on Monday night?
Absolutely, I'll be there. Yeah, don't worry.
Agenda item number nine. Review and discuss the designation of the following positions within the Recreation Department as special municipal employees pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, chapter 268A, section 1N. All part-time seasonal summer staff positions, including but not limited to summer recreation program staff and the part-time summer recreation program director position. These positions are part-time and will serve on a seasonal or limited basis, and such designation will allow for flexibility in service while maintaining compliance with the Commonwealth's Conflict of Interest laws. Entertain a motion to recommend for approval to town council.
Thank you.
Motion by Chenier, second by Dow.
Thank you. Through you, this is just, we had an applicant to be selected as the director of the summer program who's a teacher, because of the fact that they're a teacher, they can't hold the role, or they're just, they think they're a special municipal employee because of the status of, you can't hold two positions within the town.
Okay.
Two paid positions. You have a paid position and voluntary, but you can't hold two paid positions within the town.[1678.32]